All right. Good evening. Calling to order our special meeting Tuesday, May 9, 2023. I will have our city clerks start with our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retuja Ndepore. Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Let me see if Rosheen or Retuja is on the attendee list. Okay, back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I know Retuja is out. I don't know if anyone would like to make a motion excusing her for this evening?
I move that we excuse Councilmember Ndepore for tonight's meeting.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Excused absence, six zero, for Councilmember Ndepore. Councilmember Trine, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, can you do our land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salage peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty, agenda is approved. So next up, we have public comment. Thank you. First up, Paul Stickney.
I was expecting to see a lot of people here tonight. Not, just kidding. Anyway, hi, Samamish City Council. It's Paul Stickney, Samamish. The comment tonight is a little bit shotgun oriented. Let's go back to the fall of 2018 when a seven oh Planning Commission vote transmitted a version of Samamish Homegrown to City Council. That plan called for this current comp plan cycle shall include housing amounts to deal with future growth and internal needs. Something else it called for was to put more multifamily in centers and not much in single-family neighborhoods in terms of single-family housing. It called for clear and compelling needs to direct the amounts of housing we need in this comp plan cycle. And it called for options to provide housing as people move through life, from young adults, empty nesters and seniors, and a whole lot more. In PDFs five and six I sent today, there was a copy of the Department of Commerce grant. And that grant has a goal to call for affordable and market rate housing in communities. Step one five I want to call attention to. It was to quantify existing and projected housing needs for all income levels. That was due in March of 2022. The Housing Needs Assessment was due in July of 2022 with a scheduled joint PC and CC meeting in September of 2022. And Action Item 2.1 in the Commerce Grant talked to develop strategies to increase supply of housing and variety of housing needed to serve the needs identified, which they haven't been quantified yet. In tonight's agenda packet, there's a sentence. Housing needs analysis clarifications identified during these meetings will be addressed in the future. I'm okay with that for small stuff, but not for the big stuff. Knowing our numbers is big stuff, and those numbers are missing. That leads me to the asks that I sent in today in an email. I suggest we change the name of our Housing Needs Assessment to the City of Samamish Housing Needs Assessment Past, Present and Future. We have a lot of past to catch up on and figure out, as well as plan for the long term. I think we need to obtain post haste all internal needs and put in placeholders to make changes based on needs and appropriate legislative strategies to do what we want as a community once we have the information. Appreciate the chance to speak, and there was a lot I sent in today, but I just wanted to kind of go over it in sort of a short summary. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mary?
Mary Winters, Samamish, 22 years. First, I'm not going to talk about the housing stuff, but I totally agree with Paul, and we are missing things. If we don't get the data, we won't know what we have or what we need. You can't just do the 2,100 affordable homes. And they did put in the packet, the very long packet, a lot of people's comments and said, you know, they're not really environmentally or mitigated needed. Well, if you don't do the things that the people have written about, and there were quite a few people, and there were more online that they'd done for the Planning Commission, you are going to impact the environment adversely, and you will need to do mitigation matters. So even though they put the comments, they really do, we need to get some of the data. So I won't spend more time on that because that Paul's comment given just now was really excellent as well. What I am talking about tonight is the Lewis Thompson Tight Line. First of all, I'm really thankful for the project and the funding. Secondly, Mark Cross, who was on council and mayor in 2007, he was on council for eight years. He had researched in 2021 that he thinks that you can get a Transportation Improvement Board grant. And Jeff Elikish had said, yeah, probably, but he said, let's wait. I know Jeff isn't with the city any longer, but Audrey's doing a really great job, and she's the one that actually helped get the grants that we did. So I think that will be coming up, opening in June. And then the application is done by August, like the middle, and then they announce it in November, so it could be used. So I think that would be a way to get some of the sidewalks and some of the non-motorized transportation elements covered because you've got a lot of grants for the stormwater. So I hope that you'll look at that. And I just sent that to staff so they would have it. Because they do so many things, I just wanted to refresh that for you. For the Lewis Thompson Project, what is missing is any of the water stuff. Like, what are we doing with the stormwater? Judd's presentation that he has in the packet is just 10 slides. I can't find the 60% design anywhere online. That should be published and shared because I want to know what's happening with things, and other people will just want to know where retaining walls are done and how the drivers are being done. And 60%, we should have that information. Also, you're using Osborne Consulting, who is really good and has done a lot of the basin planning and everything from like 2010, 2011 for this city. You just hired them to do, I think, one of your continuing consent and agenda items. They have the data. It's just not available to the people. And I, just because I've been involved in stormwater for eight and a half years, I would like to meet with staff after I see those things so we can talk about, is it working or not? Because you can't not design for full build-out. You can't not take the modeling that we know about. The other couple of things missing is at the top of Lewis Thompson Road, and I have some pictures that I had sent you as a PPT and then also as a PDF. Sorry for doubling it. But at the top of Lewis Thompson Road, there's about 30 feet above the intersection, which we talked about in September, that needs to be looked at because that ditch clogs and it causes overflows. And then also, when you come down Lewis Thompson Road and you take a right to go north, there's no ditch there. That's a separate little CIP. It's actually called ZACU CIP 4. That's about $100,000, $120,000. That should be done at the same time with this road with all that mobilization and everything.
Thank you.
So I did send in my stuff. Thank you. Still says.
Thanks. All right, move to online?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. I see no public commenters. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so next up, we have our executive session. Anticipation, I think, is 15 minutes. So pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i, and council may take action when we return. So we will come back at 6:55. Thank you. Everything's not on mute, right? We're good? All right, council's extending executive session by five minutes, and we will be back at seven.
I move to delegate to the city manager the decision whether to identify, hold harmless and defend a city employee, elected official, or volunteer pursuant to Chapter 2.20 of the Samamish Municipal Code in consultation with the city attorney.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And we will get you that motion. All right, so next up, I think we're going to have to swap so we can get the Coast Guard to, so that you can leave. So I'm going to make an, what do I need to do? Move to amend the agenda to switch our proclamations.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Safe Boating and Paddling Week, May 20th to the 26th, 2023. Whereas every May, the National Safe Boating Campaign reminds boaters and paddlers about the importance of safe boating. And whereas Washington State encourages all boaters, adults and children to wear a life jacket when boating in case of a boat capsize or other boat accident. And whereas the City of Samamish is adjacent to Lake Samamish and encompasses numerous other waterways, and a large number of Samamish residents of all ages engage in recreational boating. And whereas to navigate, operate, employ or more a motorboat, a sailboat in Washington State, you must have a Washington Title, Registration Card and registration decals. And whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks wherever you're in a motorboat, sailboat, canoe, kayak or paddleboard or enjoying lakes and rivers as a swimmer or water skier. Now therefore, Kayla Clark, Mayor of Samamish, Washington, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim May 20th to the 26th, 2023 to be Safe Boating and Paddling Week.
Awesome, thank you. I think we're going to grab a picture, and then we'll come back for that next proclamation. Does that sound good, Scott? Your photographer. So thank you to our two members of Coast Guard for coming.
I will print.
Thank you.
Although I've been told my signature.
Dave? So now we have International Compost Awareness Week. Is that you, Councilmember Howe?
Very appropriately, yes. So this is a proclamation for International Compost Awareness Week.
Do you want me to write that out?
Whereas the compost research and education foundation, along with other countries, have declared the first full week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. And whereas composting is a way of returning organic resources to the soil and is a way of conserving water during extreme drought or flooding conditions, reducing water consumption and non-point pollution, and a proven method of decreasing the dependence on chemical fertilizers and decreasing erosion. And whereas composting is an effective form of waste reduction, reuse and recycling. With composting becoming one of the primary methods communities use to reach waste diversion goals. And whereas communities through their local governments, highway departments, Soil Conservation Service and public works professionals can have significant impact on clean water, soil, climate change and landfill diversion by using compost for public works projects. And whereas International Compost Awareness Week is a publicity and education initiative to showcase compost production and demonstrate compost use and create green jobs in infrastructure for cities and states that implement composting programs. And whereas this year's theme, for healthier soil, healthier food, compost exclamation point, is based on the goal of focusing on how compost can have a role in helping feed the world by making our soil healthier to produce healthy food. Therefore, Kayla Clark, Mayor of City of Samamish, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim the first week of May, the 7th to the 13th, to be International Compost Awareness Week.
I'm so proud of you. You did it. All right, thank you, Councilmember Howe. Okay, new business, David Pyle. So review of the Draft Housing Action Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Great, good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. While we're working to promote our panelists, I'll go ahead and introduce the topic. Tonight's topic is a workshop with the City Council on the proposed Housing Action Plan, also proposed to be renamed as the Housing Diversification Toolkit. The acronym we've been using is the HAP or the HDT. I see Miriam Leitner has joined us, the city's Community Development Planning Manager. We will also have Elliot Weiss from Community Attributes joining us, as well as Kelly Hildy, the department deputy director, who's also joined us. Welcome, Kelly, Elliot and Miriam. And I believe we will be turning it over to Miriam, who will do, or Kelly, who will do a short introduction and then passing it off to Elliot.
Thanks, David. We also should have Jackie Baleal joining us as well. I believe she needs to be promoted to a panelist as well, please.
We are looking for her in the system, and she'll be promoted when we identify her.
Perfect. Thank you. So we are very excited to be here tonight to share the Draft Housing Action Plan for your review and input. The Planning Commission completed its public hearing for the Housing Action Plan on April 6th and proposed that the document be renamed the Housing Diversification Toolkit, which you'll see reflected in Exhibit 1. Tonight, Elliot Weiss, our consultant from Community Attributes, Inc., will provide a brief overview of how we got here and will then introduce the document. After this, we'll open it up for your questions and comments. Those will be integrated into an updated version of the document for the public hearing on June 6th. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the work with you, and I'm going to hand things over to Elliot while also getting a copy of our presentation. So stick with us shortly.
Thank you, Miriam. Thank you, council, for having me. I'm just going to hang tight until we've got the presentation up. But as Miriam said, very happy to be here, excited to be sharing our progress with you. Can everyone hear me okay? Great.
I just need one more minute, and then we'll be ready to go. Sorry, bub.
Okay. Thanks, Miriam, for sharing the presentation here. We're here to discuss the Housing Action Plan. As David noted, this is proposed upon Planning Commission recommendation to be renamed as the Housing Diversification Toolkit. So that change is pending your approval. But this is our topic of discussion for this evening. The goal of the Housing Action Plan, and this is to rehash a previous conversation point, but I think it's an important one, is to encourage additional affordable housing, but also market rate housing. And importantly, to increase the diversity of housing types available within the City of Samamish across a broad range of incomes or a broad range of affordability levels. And so some of those needs were discussed in the Housing Needs Assessment. The strategies that we have presented in the Housing Action Plan respond to those needs and are aligned with these goals of housing diversity and housing affordability. Just as a recap of how we got here, we presented the Housing Needs Assessment both to the Planning Commission and to the City Council in October and November of 2022. We received further public input on a preliminary list of strategies throughout the fall and into December of 2022. And Planning Commission and City Council provided input on those strategies into January of 2023. That allowed us to move from a very long list of potential strategies, more than 40, I think, were presented initially, to 11 that we have landed on in this Housing Diversification Toolkit with your recommendation in January and some further workshopping from the Planning Commission. So that second phase there, the HAP development process noted in that gray bar or the Housing Diversification Toolkit process has engaged Planning Commission on multiple occasions to hear some concerns about the potential strategies to rectify those, hopefully, and to advance a list that has both broad public support and support from appointed and elected officials. We are now at a stage where we are attempting to finalize the Housing Diversification Toolkit and ultimately adopt it no later than next month, June of 2023, which is also the deadline for adoption based on the grant that the City of Samamish has received from the Department of Commerce. So this is a little bit more detailed recap of how we got here. Again, we refined those housing strategies with the Planning Commission in January 2023. Basically, we had presented to you, the City Council, the feedback that we had received from the public through various outreach and engagement events and techniques. And that helped us cull down that longer list of 40-plus strategies to the 11. Planning Commission helped us work through and refine those, airing out some concerns along the way, particularly related to how those strategies may be implemented ultimately. And a lot of that implementation work is still in front of us. But that helped us to refine the list of what we are calling opportunities for implementation in Samamish associated with each of those 11. The Planning Commission then went through a public hearing process and a recommendation process and unanimously recommended to the City Council that Housing Action Plan or Housing Diversification Toolkit for adoption by City Council in April of 2023. And then the city has been working on a SEPA determination of nonsignificance and has been in a comment period for that process in April of 2023. There are two documents referenced here on this slide, which I believe you have access to or are referenced in your packet. So the Housing Action Plan has a few different components or elements per this slide. The action plan itself identifies those 11 strategies and gives some supporting information for those strategies. That includes the aforementioned opportunities for implementation. It also includes some order of magnitude estimates of how many units could be produced by each strategy, of where within the city would make sense for implementation of that strategy, of the housing types most likely to be produced by that strategy. Of course, a lot of that is ultimately going to be dictated by the market. The city can only be so prescriptive, but they are strategies that we think are aligned to produce the housing needs identified for the City of Samamish, including for its current and future residents and for its workforce. There is a monitoring plan included, which allows the city to update month over month or year over year its progress toward the goals that have been identified by the Department of Commerce in King County, as well as goals that the city has independently of those planning requirements from King County and Commerce. And then there are appendices, the most notable of which is the Housing Needs Assessment, which was a data-driven assessment of housing need, as the name implies, and includes information about Samamish's current housing inventory, demographic characteristics and trends, economic characteristics and trends, and survey results from both the statistically valid resident survey and the public survey that included workers in Samamish. This is just a preview of the type of content you'll see in the action plan or the Diversification Toolkit. Each strategy starts with an overview. As you may recall, we have four identified themes coming out of the Housing Needs Assessment. Those are meeting the planning requirements you have for housing, providing for housing for Samamish workers, accommodating housing needs that result from demographic shifts or changes in Samamish, and preserving Samamish's sense of place. So for each of the 11 strategies, we've tried to highlight the most clear and direct links to those themes from the Housing Needs Assessment. The opportunities for Samamish, I've already talked about a couple of times. Those are the ways that that strategy could be implemented or deployed within the city. And then implementation timing, pardon, just talks about how long it might take in order to effectuate that particular strategy. Some of these may be more near-term, medium-term, long-term. And it's important that some of them do come sooner rather than later because they might be aligned with ongoing efforts, such as your periodic update of your comprehensive plan, or they might currently be on city staff's work program. Some of them are more complex efforts that require more resources and will just take additional time for those reasons. We try to provide some supporting information that is helpful context. That includes sample jurisdictions, so other places within Washington that are taking on these strategies and grappling with some of these implementation challenges or questions. Planning alignment is to highlight areas where some of the city's other goals in terms of transportation or climate might be bolstered or reinforced by this particular housing strategy. And then we categorize each as one of four types of intervention. There are programmatic interventions, partnerships, regulatory interventions, which require some kind of code amendment process, and other, which is a catch-all for anything that does not fall into the first three. And then finally, we have some infographics here that, as I said earlier, try to provide some information on an order of magnitude level about the types of units that would be produced by that strategy, the quantity of units that would be produced, and the income bands that they might target in terms of affordability and really in terms of the affordability requirements the city is planning for. So these are only estimates, and I caveat them heavily because, again, so much of this is going to be determined by the market. But it is true that certain programmatic interventions, certain partnerships might target different housing types, and different housing types might be better aligned with, I suppose, different income levels. Geographic focus is another thing that we will highlight within the Housing Action Plan or Diversification Toolkit for each of the 11 strategies. That's not intended to be too prescriptive. There are certain strategies that make more sense in existing commercial centers, for example. And other strategies may be more appropriate for residential neighborhoods. So again, it's a high-level assessment of where you might choose to implement this. And I think the ongoing work on your periodic update to your comprehensive plan is going to provide more detail in terms of how that might be implemented and where that might be implemented by advancing some land use scenarios that show that in very fine grain. The monitoring plan is simply an implementation tool that allows the city to track the impact and progress of each strategic intervention. It includes things like the number of housing units produced and then subdivides those by housing type, by affordability level. and then subdivides those by housing type, by affordability level. It attributes them to the different housing program or partner that you are working with and the different part of the city that you are finding those units being developed in. So you're able to get an understanding of what's working and what's not. And maybe three to five years from now, you can take a look at that data and say, what needs refining? Where are we falling short relative to our own expectations? And how can we, you know, improve our efforts to implement, you know, the housing element, the land use element, the Housing Diversification Toolkit to greater success? The appendices, I reference the Housing Needs Assessment being one of the more important pieces there. The survey results, there is an addendum, I should note, to the Housing Needs Assessment, which responds to some of the comments that we received after presenting that document back in October. But the survey results are robust and they are included there. There are charts and graphs to summarize the responses to every single question and a stakeholder engagement summary, which talks about the various parties that we did outreach to, the folks who participated, and the partners that we've engaged along the way to help understand their own parallel efforts and how Sammamish can contribute or, you know, more effectively, I suppose, support them. So these deliverables on this slide just track with the grant that the city of Sammamish received from the Department of Commerce. The Public Engagement Plan was submitted in June of 2022, and we have followed that engagement plan since. The Current and Future Housing Needs Assessment was submitted in October of 2022. The draft Housing Action Plan in March of 2023. And again, the adopted Housing Action Plan is due in June of 2023. So we're coming up on June, of course. We'll be back with you early in June for the public hearing and then hopefully for an adoption at your mid-June meeting. I don't have the calendar in front of me. I think it's the 13th, if memory serves. So tonight, we've got a few discussion questions queued up, and I believe these were in your packet as well. Do you have any questions about the Housing Action Plan or the Housing Diversification Toolkit? Do you have any concerns that have not yet been addressed? And do you support renaming the Housing Action Plan as the Housing Diversification Toolkit? Happy to take other questions as well, but those three are sort of chief in terms of allowing city staff to move forward and to meet the requirements of their grant from the Department of Commerce. And for city councilors, we are asking council members to submit comments and questions in the comment matrix that's been provided by Sunday, May 14th, at 9:00 PM, which will allow us to go ahead and make changes recommended by City Council or respond to questions or clarifications needed by City Council in a timely manner so that we can meet that June deadline. That's the end of our presentation, I should clarify. I am happy to answer any and all questions that you may have.
All right. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you for the presentation and for the documents, too, the supporting documents. They're really well laid out. Did you want the questions now or did you want us to put them in an email for May 14th? Because I have some now.
I think we're happy to have discussion and questions now. I think any questions that ultimately need some change to the document or some further documentation, some resolution, sort of, you know, in writing or in the actual Diversification Toolkit, the action plan, it would be great if we could have those in writing as well.
Okay.
You know, Miriam, if you have any other, another perspective on that, I'm happy to hear it.
No, I agree. I think questions now are great. And I think if you have specific feedback relating to the strategies, you're welcome to share high-level comments now and then you can put the very specific edits or comments into the matrix that will help us with our editing.
You bet. So I'm not expecting answers to this right now, but this is kind of where I'm headed with some of my thoughts. That I did notice, for example, that the organization did talk to the Master Builders Association, which is great. I'd also like to know what trade organizations you talk to for apartments and for large condo projects, because their criteria could be very different. I'd also like to know when you talk to the Master Builders Association and have these senior latest drafts. I want to understand better how they were engaged. The TDR program in specific. The theory is that if we rework the interlocal agreement between the city and King County, we'll get a, we'll get an increase in development just using the TDR credits. So how many does, how many credits does King County have? Like, is this a, how big a number is this? And I understand that STCA also has credits. How many do they have? Are they prepared to sell those, relinquish those? I don't understand how that process is going to work. So that's, that's another question. When affordable housing units are mandated, the cost, when affordable is mandated, when we mandate it, then that cost goes into the market-priced units. Is there an alternative? So that's a question. I'm just trying to understand, what is a transition area overlay? What is that, is that the wedding cake stuff? I just didn't know what that was. So you could actually answer that question for me now. That'd be great.
An overlay zone is just a specific zoning tool that allows you to modify one of the underlying zoning designation's requirements. So if you didn't want to create a new designation from scratch, if you didn't think that the changes were significant enough to justify that, but you wanted to say, well, in this very narrow area that is zoned R6 or whatever.
Yeah.
Just to give an example, you wanted to modify a provision of that to allow maybe an additional use. You could do so via an overlay. So it would be allowed where the overlay exists, but not in other R6 zones where it does not exist in this example.
Thank you. That, that really helps. I have a different question about setbacks. What would be the recommendation and alterations to both FAR and setbacks to accommodate missing middle? Because I didn't see a specific number. Does creating a subarea streamline anything? I understand creating a subarea takes a tremendous amount of effort and work, but I, I need to understand better, down the track then, what is the big advantage? As I understand it, for developers, what's missing for them is predictability. So while a development agreement can enable some degree of predictability, it may not ensure or guarantee it. That, you know, I want to, I guess, if, if, if we're trying to solve for predictability, then I want to make sure that a development agreement actually, in fact, does that. So I don't know what the barriers are to that, but that would be my comment around that. If, in fact, a barrier to development is the fact that we take three years to permit something versus, say, one year, are there metrics that could be measured? Is there a way to determine what would be a reasonable expectation as to when someone might be able to expect something in terms of return or feedback or next stages? So that we, and I might ask, I guess I got asked the question, we track that?
So I'd, I'd be happy to jump in and answer the question about development agreements. So development agreements can provide quite a bit of predictability to a developer as long as they're conforming to the terms of the agreement. Development agreement, our interpretation of development agreement rules does not allow you to do something the code does not otherwise allow or that the code precludes. So you wouldn't be able to get some additional benefit that you're not otherwise able to. It just really helps to concrete what you're doing in an agreement. The, with, with regard to the timing and the permit review, the biggest obstacle that we face is that applicants come in the door with permit proposals and plans that don't meet city requirements. So when you think about the amount of time it takes to permit something, you always need to think about it in terms of, or I suggest always thinking about it in terms of tolling. What is the net time that the city has that in its possession? Oftentimes, it's a balance of the applicant revising something, changing their plans, the city having to re-review it, having comments on that again. And, you know, we go around, you know, two or three or four times with them before they're actually able to provide a plan that meets city rules. Simplifying city rules is one way to help move things through the system faster. However, we're in a very complex environment. We want to have a robust tree canopy. We want environmental protection. We want sustainability. We want really advanced designs that are attractive to the community, and that's not simple. That's not easy to achieve. It takes a lot of work, working with a property owner and applicant in order to come to agreement on something that meets city code. Further, you know, we haven't always been in an environment where we feel that we have the ability to make a decision on something. So we have relied heavily on binary language in our code that is either you meet it or you don't, and show us how you're meeting it. We don't have the discretionary authority that we would need to move things through the system a lot faster. And that requires a lot of trust in staff, that staff are doing the right thing and that staff are trained and will ultimately result in a product that the community will benefit from. And unless that trust is there, we can't have that, that discretionary authority to approve permits. Further, developers don't always like it when staff have discretionary authority because they may not agree with what the staff are asking them to do. And then that results in a, in a dispute, which then tends to protract the review timeline as well. So there's a lot of things to consider there with that one. And happy to talk more offline about that. I've, I've been doing this for a long time and have seen things go sideways and have things, seen things work out really well as well.
And that's why we are fortunate to have you on staff because of your tenure and your ability to have, you know, spanned and seen a lot of different development. And what I, and I, I think it's possible that we may have a complicated environment that for, for that kind of review, intentionally complicated because it's, we have so many criteria that we want to hit in terms of sustainability and, and several other components as well. So I don't know how we fit with other jurisdictions in terms of ease. I suspect we might be thornier than others.
My, my sense is, is that we've had some ups and downs with leadership at the city over the years. We've had some staff departures. We've not had a lot of continuity over the years, just speaking on fact. And that has led to a bit more of a difficult environment for developers to pursue development. That said, there are things that we could do in certain parts of the city that may be acceptable to the community. Of course, the community has to be involved and buy off on it. And for example, if you were to design, and this goes back to the question about subareas, that you could actually relax the restrictions in subareas if you do the advanced planning that's necessary so that everyone's comfortable with potentially giving up on the tree canopy in a limited area in favor of simplifying design review for affordable mid-rise buildings. And I see Kelly Hildy has her hand up as well, so I want to give her the opportunity to speak.
Oh, David, you're doing great. I, I just wanted to put my hand up because there's two questions from Councilmember Howe that I can easily answer. So I, but I don't want to break what you're doing. So I'll let you continue and then I'm putting my hand up in line.
That, that, that pretty much, you know, hits, hits my wall in terms of what I, what I was trying to do. You know, because, just, just to be really clear, we are trying to create an environment where we can create a range of housing opportunities for, for folks. And it's not like we are full steam ahead. Let's, you know, give developers the right away to do everything. That is not what I'm saying at all. What I am saying, however, is what can we do that makes sense from a policy point of view that enables the right kind of building to happen at the right time here in Sammamish? And where there's opportunity to streamline, not cut a corner, like, you know, but to streamline so that we can attract really awesome middle housing, affordable housing. You know, something that other jurisdictions look to as bellwethers, is the things that they, that they could aspire to. That's where I am headed with this. And if you, Kelly, if you've got a couple of answers to questions, I'll take them.
Absolutely. And I love providing answers in the moment because we do have an audience. So the first and second question regarding TDRs. So the interlocal agreement with King County identifies 75 TDR certificates. So that's the limit there. Of those 75, STCA, I believe, has purchased 22. R has first right of refusal to purchase the remaining. So they, in, in summary, they really have grabbed those 75 TDRs. And so that is, hopefully that answers your question on TDRs. And then on streamlining the development review process, I would say this last legislative session with the state had a, had a huge thing. One was on housing and the other was on really looking at our development regulations and how we streamline that process. And so I'm not going to say too much more on this because we are presenting to you an update next week and will provide you more details. So in summary, we're not going to have a choice because of these mandates coming from the state. But they were aiming to get housing built and get it built quickly. And I think they achieved their objective on that one. So more to come next week on that. So I did want to address those two questions and I hopefully those, I was able to answer your questions.
If I could supplement what Kelly was saying about TDRs as well, in addition to everything she said, that we do have on our work plan a revisit of our TDR program where we will be looking at the interlocal agreement with King County as well as the city's own internal TDR program. One of the essential elements in meeting our GMA requirements and dealing with our affordable housing allocation will be the TDR program. It is essential to our success going forward. And until, we're, we're not quite ready to open that up because we're looking at the different tools that we have for housing, the numbers that we might need for, to, to, to address the affordability allocations as well as the internal need. And once we, once we have that established, then we can look at how to fine-tune our zoning and how to use TDRs to move units around in the city to get the right units of the right type of housing in the right place.
I had one answer as well relating to the cost of affordable housing going to developers. And my response to that is it's really a lot to do with partnerships. And so by partnering with nonprofit builders, nonprofits that provide affordable housing, they can support those affordable units. There's also funds from like the Washington State Housing Trust Fund or the Arch Housing Trust Fund and other sources that can go to supplement some of those costs.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the first question you asked, are we okay with the housing, the, the name Housing Diversity Toolkit? And I think I'm fine with that. I don't have any real opinion, negative opinion towards that. So I'm fine if that's the name of the, the document. I just, I just had one thing I wanted to just bring into the conversation and maybe we don't need to have a huge chat about it right now, but just to kind of think about it. We've continually been receiving public comment from members of the public about getting quantifiable data on our housing gaps here in Sammamish. And there was a proposal about putting like a placeholder in this document that we would return to the subject at another time possibly. And I wanted to kind of address that. We hear about it a lot. And I wanted, at some point, that we need to kind of, I wanted to have a better discussion about, is that something that we should be doing? What's involved in doing something like that? What kind of data are we likely to get from it? Meaning, what kind of reliable data could we get from such a project? How expensive would that be for the city to undertake such a thing? Or is there already kind of data that we can glean from other agencies that could help support that subject? But I'd like us to kind of at least address it and so that we can kind of speak to the public and say, yes, we've talked about this and this is where we stand on it. Either yes, we're doing it, no, we're, we're not, or this is how we're going to supplement the information that we already have with some quantifiable data. I think it's worth, we, I think we have to turn to this subject. We've gotten a lot of public comment and I would like to kind of address it. But that's, those are my only comments tonight. Thank you.
So I'd be happy to jump in on that one. I appreciate the comments and I've appreciated the public comments that we've heard on this topic. I would, I would direct your attention to Exhibit 3 in the Agenda Bill tonight, which is a memo that I believe was previously provided to the council by email and also that the commenters I know were, are aware of as they've made comment on the memo as well. The Community Housing Need Memo, which provides some background information on the request and, and how that and how that information might be obtained and the complexities of that. One of the challenges that we have is that we've heard a lot about data, but we've not heard specifically about any methodology that would be proposed. It's great to have data sets, but unless we understand what the commenters are suggesting we do with the data sets to generate the numbers that they think we need, it's unclear to us how we would get from the actual data sets that they have provided or that they have referenced to actually generating a number that they are suggesting we should generate. So we haven't seen a methodology yet. And I've asked that if they could send that in to us or talk about that, we'd really be appreciative so we could better understand what it is they think we should be doing with these data sets. The data sets themselves are great. I understand that and they're helpful and we appreciate that, but wanting to know what they think we should be doing with that. The other is that we, I did hear in the comment tonight from the beginning of the meeting that we had not actually completed the requirement of the contract under the grant and that we did not actually quantify the housing need. I would rebut that with the fact that we did. As part of the housing needs assessment, there is documentation. And in Exhibit 3, the Housing, Community Housing Need Memo, there is an outline in a table identifying what was included with not only Sammamish Homegrown some number of years ago, but also with the most recent housing needs assessment that was done under the grant. So just wanted to highlight that as well. So from our perspective, we did quantify the need. We did not go to the detail of quantifying up to 700% AMI and breaking it down into very small brackets and looking at that because that is not what the industry standard is, what is required by the state for comprehensive plan updates. It is not necessarily useful once you get above 120% AMI. It's really trying to get an understanding. Further, the purpose of quantifying need is not to get an exact unit count of how many exact units you need in each category. It's really to characterize and to understand where you might be deficient in certain housing types. And what that does is it allows you to understand what tools you might need to add to your toolset and what barriers you might need to remove so that the market can provide the housing that the community is asking be provided and built. So that's what we did. We quantified it to understand that. We identified what tools were missing, what barriers were present. And the Housing Diversification Toolkit is a, is a group of tools that could be used going forward to ensure that if they were implemented in city policies and codes, that it would open the door up to the market providing those housing types at the quantities that the community via the market is asking be provided. We don't control the market, but what we do is we control the codes that either allow for it or present barriers to it being produced. And I think that's a really important thing to keep in mind is even if we had a number that really discreetly broke down the different bracketed AMI groups up to 700% AMI, what will we get from that? What would that achieve? We don't control the market. We already have identified what barriers and tools are needed. So I present that question as well. So, you know, we're happy to talk about it some more, you know, and we will also be continuing this conversation into the comprehensive plan update where we will carry in the Housing Diversification Toolkit, including the HNA, the Housing Needs Assessment. Those will become background information in the comprehensive plan update. So with regard to the comment about including a placeholder, we don't necessarily see a placeholder as appropriate because these documents will become, or this document will become background information. And instead of being a placeholder, we'd rather see any additional need analysis, which we're doing, actually inserted directly into the housing element and the land use element of the comprehensive plan. Long explanation, but I just wanted to make sure to respond that we have been listening to these comments. We do appreciate them and there's more work to come on it.
Great. Thank you for addressing that. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you for the presentation. I was really impressed with how everybody distilled this huge sort of topic into these strategies and alongside with the graphics, it was completely understandable. So thank you for that. I had a few questions. The first one is with each of the strategies, it shows the quantity of units that could be produced. It shows low, medium, and high. Are there numbers associated with that? Like low, are we talking double digits? Are we talking hundreds of units? So, I mean, it's really difficult to assess how effective these strategies are into meeting our housing allocations when there's no numbers associated.
Yeah, that's a great question. Councilmember Lamb, thank you. There are no numbers and I tried to cue this up again as an order of magnitude assessment. I think it's relative in some sense to your overall housing targets or goals or allocations in the sense that certainly anything that registers as a significant percentage of that overall allocation of 2,100 units would be categorized as high or something to that effect. But the variable that we don't have yet and that is forthcoming and that will allow us to do more to quantify this is those land use scenarios, future land use scenarios that are coming as part of your comprehensive plan. Some of these tools have inherent limitations in terms of the numbers of units that they can produce. And so maybe we characterize them as producing a low number, but that low could scale up or down depending on how broadly throughout the city they are implemented. And that really comes down to that land use element and that housing element. And so that work is forthcoming and I think that you'll receive additional information in the coming months about maybe more specific attempts to quantify. So what we've tried to do is just cue up the subject at a high level for further discussion as we move forward with the comprehensive plan update.
Okay. That's really helpful. My other question is regarding missing middle housing. So my understanding that missing middle housing is to build more diverse housing. And because, because we're building all these units, lots that would be typically a single lot, we're building duplexes and we're building triplexes. And as a result, these are units that have smaller square footages and therefore the affordability would be lower than a typical single-family home. So what perplexed me a little bit was looking at the AMI brackets for middle housing and that it's, that it's 80 up to 120 AMI, which really kind of is counter what middle housing is all about. And so now I'm looking at the other strategies and the other strategies such as the partnerships and inclusionary zoning, they're covering like the 30% AMI and then they're in the mid-rises. So in effect, you know, what I'm seeing is that the units that we don't hear, that we don't have here in Sammamish will be desirable. It'll be desirable from people of all income brackets. But somehow the people in the highest income brackets get the most desirable units, which really feels, you know, unequitable to me. And so I don't know, you know, the intent of middle housing isn't what I'm seeing here in this plan and I'm struggling with that.
Yeah, that's a great point and it is a challenge. I think missing middle housing units are very important for housing diversification and they're very important for providing workforce housing. And one of the goals of this whole project has been to increase the opportunities for people who work in Sammamish to also live in Sammamish if that's something that they're interested in. I think there may be opportunities to build missing middle housing types at an AMI level below 80%. We don't aim to be too prescriptive with these infographics. Again, it's an order of magnitude assessment and we think it's more likely than not that most missing middle housing types will be developed at that 80 to 120% AMI band because it is still just two units on what is an expensive parcel of land. And splitting the land cost between the two units also drives down the ultimate cost of the unit. But at 50% of AMI, you know, we might be looking at an affordable monthly housing cost of $1,500 or so. And it can be hard to deliver any ownership product, especially an ownership product that sits on what was formerly a large single-family lot at a $1,500 a month sort of final payment. And so, you know, I think there are some opportunities on the margins and I take your point about wanting to provide quality housing opportunities for people at all income bands. I think there are a lot of other ways we can make sure that that multifamily housing is a quality product that meets the needs of folks, of varying family sizes, of varying stations in life. So things like design guidelines and subarea planning and a lot of these other strategies that we view as mutually beneficial or mutually supporting, mutually reinforcing are in the mix to answer that particular concern. But missing middle still has a role, I think. And, you know, even if it's not ideally suited for those very low income bands, it's still an important part of the strategy to diversify the housing stock in Sammamish and it's representing a lot of housing types that Sammamish has not traditionally had.
So I did notice that cottage housing though is in the lower brackets of AMI. So I wasn't clear why cottage housings got singled out within middle housing, but that's just a side note. So perhaps there's a way to encourage triplexes because if we're talking about like, you know, a million dollar home or a 1.5 million, you divide that by three. I mean, each unit in theory should only cost half, you know, $500,000. So I don't know if there's a way to encourage like even like these smaller, smaller than, you know, than if they were just a duplex to get that affordability down.
Yeah, that's a great point. And cottage houses are by nature of their design limited in terms of the total square footage, so that can help in making cottage houses more affordable than certain other missing middle types. Duplexes often have a significant amount of square footage. You can very easily design duplexes to have 2,500 square feet or more. And so it's not always the case that all of these missing middle types are going to have very low square footages that have low price tags attached to them. Some of them actually afford quite a bit of space and that's accounting for at least part of the reason why cottage houses are distinguished from some of these other missing middle types. But Miriam's had her hand up and has been waiting patiently, so I'll hand it to her.
I was just going to add, one of the things I noticed as we were doing this work, I did a lot of time looking at some of the projects that are monitored by Arch. And one of the things that struck me was in a lot of the new developments where they're building subdivisions, they've also included a few units that are duplexes or are cottage housing and that those are reserved for the 50 to 80% AMI. So it's not hitting below 50, but it is giving some middle housing alternatives within that broader community. So that might be something that we can look at and I'm assuming it's probably addressed through some of our inclusionary zoning roles as well.
Yeah, I wanted to jump into that as well, that it's also helpful to look at these tools as stacking them. So there are ways to include multiple tools together to ultimately get the outcome that we want. Again, and I don't mean to be negative in this part of the conversation, but the builders are going to build what they can sell for the profit, the maximum profit they can sell it for. And unless there is restriction on the price of the unit, the builders are going to sell it for whatever the market will bear. And, you know, the good news is, is that by providing, if we can see marketable, profitable middle housing units built in the city, then we'll diversify our housing supply. That's great. It gives options to people. And, you know, typically middle housing types are cheaper than a four or 5,000 square foot single-family home, just by the simple economics of it. However, we do have opportunity to layer in inclusionary zoning as we go through our efforts with our comp plan and our development regs changes. We could do things like concomitant agreements under inclusionary zoning where when you upzone an area or give a developer a benefit or a property owner a benefit, that they are then required to return that, some of that back to the community and provide a certain percentage of the units within a certain range of affordability. Very common practice. So, you know, there's, there are things we can do to help sort of move the needle towards 80%, 50 to 80%. It becomes much more complex when you get down below 80 and down into 30 and below 30. There's quite a bit of subsidy, you know, someone has to pay for that difference. And where that funding comes from is really the big question. So thinking about all the different tools is we have the ability to stack the tools to get the right outcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, like if we could just get even down to 50, that would be great. So knowing that a lot of these strategies, and you mentioned this, that TDRs will be coming back, I'm going to assume like development regs, et cetera, could we get like a list of all the things that you think we will be seeing just so that we can kind of understand between now and when we adopt a comp plan, all the things that we'll have to address?
It's a great question. Yeah, we could come back with that. I, you know, I think, I think most of these will be in the hopper for the comp plan update and development regs update.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I also want to compliment you on the, kind of the slide layout to try to get everything all in one, one picture. I think that's super helpful. One question I did have though, on the housing needs analysis themes, where, where in those themes are like our, our grown kids? Because I think when you say changing demographics, I think you're speaking to the aging population, right? Which by the way, when we say aging population, it's not, I don't think that we're actually getting older. It's that the 18 to 35-year-olds have all left, not all. But that's where you see the decreases, right, is in the 18 to 35-year-olds. So it's not like, you know, it'd be nice if we were all just living longer. But where do our grown kids fit? Like, because I think, when I think about like our internal needs, and I hear you David on, like how do we go about calculating that? I'm not sure we have to make it super complicated right now. I think we need to look at the people who work here and the people who currently live here, can they continue to live here? Right? And those are some of the things I want to make sure we address. So yeah, we don't have housing for the 18 to 35-year-olds apparently. So are those, is that included in any of these themes or no?
Yeah, it's absolutely included. Yeah, it may not be all that explicit on the summary spread that has the four themes with a paragraph of explanation. I think the changing demographics paragraph does include some language about single adults, which I, I'm not presuming that all 18 to 35-year-olds are single. But, you know, young adults, certainly there's some overlap there and we aim to catch, you know, them and folks who might be returning from college with some of these strategies. I think housing diversification serves all of these interests. You know, when you're 22, you might want to live in a place like town center as opposed to a townhouse or a detached single-family home where there is a little bit more walkability or we talked about subarea planning for these commercial centers, how to incorporate some of the various amenities that might not be all that common in Sammamish now that, you know, people at different stages of life value and look for in proximity to their housing situation. So I think that these strategies serve that interest and we'd be happy to call that out more explicitly if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think that'll help because I think that will help kind of signal to the community that we, we are accommodating some of those internal needs. And then the other group that is an internal need are the 20% of our residents that are currently living as either cost burdened or severely cost burdened. So while we make a point to call out in the housing needs analysis that a majority of our residents are not cost burdened, 20% is a pretty high number of people who are living either cost burdened or severely cost burdened. So I think this diversification also addresses that or is intended to address that internal need. So I think we have at least a couple of those internal needs. One of the things I think we have an opportunity to do and I might be kind of getting ahead of us here. David, when you talk about stacking incentives, I think we can also stack requirements, right? So one of the ways we can further encourage or require, actually let's just use the require word, for housing to be diversified and hopefully the costs come down, is when we start putting sustainability requirements on top of that, right? So when you start overlaying things like transit or vehicle miles traveled, when you look at how much more sustainable look at how much more sustainable a multifamily unit is, even a duplex versus a single-family home is more sustainable, right? And certainly a triplex, and then when you get into, you know, more multifamily, they're far more sustainable. So I think that is another way where we can ensure that anything that is built also is more in line with what we want. And we can even use the tree code, and I think you kind of touched on that, where maybe we're willing to forego some of the tree code in, say, town center, but we're going to increase that tree canopy, maybe in another area in town center. I know that there was an idea floated in the town center area to have a tree receiving site. So if we do have to take out trees, we will, we will make sure to plant them in multitudes somewhere else while we can still get that density, get that affordability, get that sustainability benefit, and not necessarily lose the overall tree canopy. So I think that's another strategy to look at, is not just the stacking of incentives, but the stacking of requirements.
I think, yeah, we would agree with that, and it's finding the right size requirement and finding the balance that I think is important. You know, one, for example, is, you know, do we require roofs to be solar-ready when buildings are being built? But that also then necessitates removal of any trees that might be within the sun's path, right? And that's something that we currently have regulations that say you have to keep the trees. Well, what if you wanted to put solar on your roof? Would you then be given an exception? Well, that's something we need to have a community conversation about to talk about balancing that.
Yeah, and again, another way to find affordability, right? There's, if we can find grant money to make units have things like solar, we reduce the total cost of living in a particular unit, because utility bills are really high. So if your utility bill goes to zero, that makes that housing unit far more affordable. So again, stacking those requirements. And on your multifamily buildings, the trees probably aren't as much of an issue, so you can build that solar there without worrying about that. Our trees aren't quite that tall in Sammamish, so. All right, so that would be another strategy we might want to look at in terms of driving towards those desired outcomes.
Correct. However, I, just to be clear, that would not be another strategy we would add to the housing diversification toolkit. That would be something that we would take on when the Climate Action Plan wraps up and is integrated into the comprehensive plan, environmental element, housing element, and land use elements, and where they all come together to ensure that we're looking at the full range and spectrum of things.
Why, why wouldn't we include things like sustainability, which reduces the cost of living in our diversification toolkit? And transit? Because if I live near transit, I don't have to buy a car. That makes things more affordable.
So I don't see that as a different, as a way to diversify the housing types, the typologies. I see that as, as a way to improve the construction type and connectedness and other attributes that go along with it that help increase the, improve the affordability and livability.
So when you think of housing diversity, you're thinking strictly of a diverse type of housing, not a diverse cost of housing?
Starting at the foundation, which is, you know, is it a duplex? Is it a single-family home? Is it a tiny home? Is it, what is it first? And then layering on requirements, as you suggest, such as sustainability requirements, you know, different type of insulation, different type of electrical prep for car charging, if you will, those other requirements being added on. That doesn't change the type of the housing. What it does is it improves its, its energy efficiency, possibly its affordability, and its livability.
Okay, because I guess I was pivoting first on affordability, not on specifically type. Okay. Kelly has her hand up.
Yeah, I do want to mention that there is some, now I just lost it, because I'm looking through the diversification toolkit formerly known as HAP. We do have a note in there under, I believe, sub-area planning and identifying sustainability measures, including green buildings. So we do have some reference to sustainability in the HAP as it is presented to you tonight. But, yeah, I agree definitely with what David said. We have so many planning efforts happening right now. What is great about it is that they are all happening under the comp plan. So you have the Climate Action Plan, the HAP, you have the transportation planning that is happening, also work under the capital facility plans. And so all of this is coming together in that detail, and it, it will all come under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan. So I, I think even with the reference here to sustainability, you're going to see that throughout the whole comp plan. It's a major thing.
Okay, because I guess I was envisioning like your little slides, right, where you have the, you know, the slide that shows like what, what AMI, you know, ranges might this produce? And I know, Elliot, you were saying it's, it's just, at this point, just in order of magnitude, but as we go into the, how do we actually get to the numbers we need to get to? I do feel like, you know, another element on that slide needs to be, well, if we add sustainability to it and it brings, it, you know, helps encourage that, or we add transit to it and it helps in that affordability range, then that feels like, so maybe that's what you're saying, is that's a different action plan?
That's the, the comp plan itself, yeah, where we start to look at and model the numbers as we assemble all the, you know, and it really, the different geographic areas in the city would be amenable to different things. You know, there, there's different levels of service with transit possibly in the future, different parts of the city, and these are where we start to pull all of the different elements, whether it's the transportation element, the environmental element, the housing element, the land use element, together in the comp plan. And, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us here. You know, 2024 is right around the corner, so we're going to be coming back to you at the same frequency we've been coming to you, but with, with bigger pieces of information to consider.
Okay, because I guess the current comp plan doesn't really pull it all together, right? We have the environmental, and environmental element is kind of completely separate from the other elements. So I love this idea that there's going to be something in the comp plan that pulls these things together that says, if you want to achieve all of these things, here are the actual, you know, ways to do it, because they aren't separate and independent. They are all interconnected.
Miriam, you wanted to add something? I think I might have accidentally interrupted you, and I apologize.
No, you're fine. I was going to just make the very obvious statement that what's nice about them all coming together in the comp plan is that that then informs the update to our development regulations, which is going to impact what you actually see being built on the ground. And so I think it's nice that we have this intersection right now, as Kelly was saying, between all of our different plans, and that they'll kind of come together at the end to form that impact.
Well, that's very exciting. Thank you. Councilmember Tree?
Oh, sorry, one last thing, Pam, I apologize. Under each one of the strategies, there is a note on climate and how each strategy addresses climate. So there, there is some specificity with each of the strategies. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, on the name, Elliot, the name's fine. I like the name. Second is, geez, I wrote a lot of notes. So thank you, Councilmember Howe, you took a lot of my stuff away, so I appreciate that. The, thank you for following the law, Mr. Pyle, I appreciate that. And thank you for following the method that is provided. Like, that's something else that you don't have control over, so thank you for doing your job. I really do appreciate that. So if I understand this correctly, we are looking at the tools and strategies, which is before us tonight, to, in a sense, meet this HB 1220 in the planning for the comprehensive plan. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So, so when I look at this, I'm going to call it, because I think it is your term, so threading the needle on how to plan for housing needs for, and if we want to take Paul Stickney's comment, the past and the present and the future, okay, I'm really looking at the present and the future, is what, knowing full well we have a deficit. So going forward, all of these come into play. And I like your term about stacking, that was really kind of cool, a nice way to make me start to synthesize some stuff and figure out, oh, how do you really do it then? First, so I have concerns. So I want to just bring those forward. So one on the TDRs, I do have, when I look at a sustainability model, TDRs to me is a challenge in that, or I have a concern. And that concern is that if the, if it's not broken, don't fix it. So I like what we currently have in place and what it's doing. If we're going to change it, then I want to make sure that what we put in place is something that makes it so that we actually get on the ground what we, what we think we should get. And so in that, I just, I'll throw this out, if you're going to transfer just from properties that can't be developed, that are either inside the city or outside the city, then I'm not interested in it. It, it needs to be properties that are being transferred that are inside the city that are buildable, so that we can preserve those four parks, open spaces, and subsequently at some point in my career on the council wildlife corridors. Okay. So that's my concern on TDRs. And I'll just say right now, I like the way it is, but I'm willing to change if it meets some of my goals and expectations that were laid out by this council, especially on sustainability on the environmental side. The second one was, I'll skip that one because the overlay was covered. Thank you. And then affordability, when, when, how do I get affordable housing in Sammamish? How do we, how does the city get affordable housing in Sammamish?
So, so I think there's a variety of ways to do that. We're trying to get at some with these, these tools identified here. You know, they're, they're, the easiest way, or I guess the most traditional or conventional way to do that is through inclusionary zoning. That's something that, you know, we've seen work to some level. You know, you're providing a few units, in exchange, you're getting a few extra market units. And, you know, what that does, though, is that requires things like TDRs to be added to the mix in order to allow you to incentivize that deeper level of affordability. The, the other thing that we have to do is we have to embrace, if the question is, how do we get affordable housing in the city? We need to embrace mid-rise, and we need to embrace locations where mid-rise can go. What we've heard from groups like Arch is that although we might get a few units of affordability through things like cottage housing or through tiny homes, that the number of deep affordable units just simply won't be there, just because of the cost of land and because, because of the cost of infrastructure, and that the, the method that they're seeing is as viable to provide that deep level of affordability is through mid-rise, which, if looking back to the toolkit, there are several different tools that can get you mid-rise. The other is, we need to look to partnerships, and we need to look to access funding sources that would allow builders who build not-for-profit to come into the city and build these deeper levels of affordable units. And they could, they could partner with for-profit builders on the same site, and a portion of the project could be built for-profit, and a portion could be built not-for-profit. And that, that's one way to achieve that. We're looking also at the synergy between the core of a commercial area where a mid-rise might be built and the peripheral outlying ring, the transition area around that core, and what the relationship is with some of these tools between the, the core, where you might do sub-area planning, and the transition ring around that, which is, as Elliot stated, a, you know, a narrow band around that core, where you might see an exchange of units that could occur, something like that. So that if you build some additional, deeper, affordable units in the core, in mid-rise, that maybe you get an increase in market units or in missing middle units in the, the transition around that. That provides the walkability, it provides the efficient use of land, provides proximity to transit and services, and it helps improve quality of life, because we're taking commutes out of people's daily life patterns to some degree. So these are the types of things that these tools try to get at, and like you say, when you stack them, you can start to see how it comes together. The next step in the journey will be plugging these tools into the modeling that we're doing with the comprehensive plan, where we start to look at land use scenarios in, in how the centers could potentially be redeveloped, how we could repurpose impervious surface, how we could take advantage of the fact that there aren't trees there right now, and we're not going to have to worry about protecting the canopy in those locations. And maybe there's opportunity even to, to add some canopy back if we, if we try real hard. You know, the, these are the things that, that we want to talk about, and once we get past this point, we then roll this into that, that conversation and make sure that we're using these tools properly in the city and hopefully getting the outcomes that, that we need to for our, for our affordable housing allocation and to provide that, that additional missing middle housing and diverse, diverse housing type that the community is asking for and that fills the, the, what's, what's the right word for it? It's a gap deficiency. There was a term that you used previously, there's a deficit in those housing types. Yes. I see Kelly has her hand up.
Yeah, and I just wanted to provide a real-world example of what we currently have here in the city, and that is the town center. And looking at the implementation or the strategies that are in this document presented to you tonight, this is what's included today, the TDR program, inclusionary zoning, missing middle, friendly housing, development agreements, minimum density, cottage homes, all, and sub-area planning, all of the, those are that, that's that stacking. And those are tools that we currently use within the town center sub-area. I also wanted to note with those tools, now we've only developed, are in the planning, reviewing process of applications, about 35% of the town centers, so 35% of the 2,000 units are either currently under review or have been built. And that has produced or will produce 135 affordable units at 80% AMI. So this is just what we see today, what is currently in the city. And if we look at the town center as a starting point and do some finessing and altering, we could really achieve that, that allocation of affordable units that we are required to plan for and really see some great results. So I just encourage us to really look at the town center again as a starting point, and there is some refinement and improvement, but I think we can really hit our goals, because we're already doing so right now.
So, good, Kelly, because one of the, like what you said about, you know, this also leads us to our regulations, you know, in 2025, and then hopefully then it leads to design standards at a more detailed level than the concept level or goal level that we have already in place. One, my other concern, probably, you mentioned this, but development agreements. So my question is, because obviously I'm concerned about development agreements, I, I know how they benefit the developer, how they benefit the residents, I don't always see that in a lot of projects that I see going on in other cities, so. But does stormwater vest in a development agreement?
So that's, that's a good question. My, we don't have legal counsel here tonight, being a study session, and I would want to defer that to legal counsel. My understanding is that it's, it vests with, with construction permits, so I, I would want the full legal analysis on that, just to make sure.
And then the second part, does, do they, do they ever sunset? Do they, a development agreement, does it have a sunset day? Do they, a development agreement, does it have a sunset date? Like, let's say they don't build for 12 years or 20 years, I mean, is there a sunset period?
It's a great question. And I, I have seen them that have a sunset provision written into them, but I don't know if you don't have one, if there is an automatic expiration on that. We could ask that also. It's a great legal question, I think.
Maybe I'll submit those two in an email, then, and CC carry on that one.
That'd be very helpful, thank you.
Okay. That would, thank you. That's it.
That was really good. Those are, yeah, I'm super curious now on those last two. Because I know last time we were talking about the covenants running as well, which is normally 99 years. Yeah, I, the, the name sounds great, looks great, thank you. I, I think the other recommendation they made was just to move forward with the plan. Was that the other, the second part of their recommendation? So I think, you know, once we get these questions addressed here, especially Councilmember House, Rambl, oh, you have more? Great. Yeah, just one more. But I think that would be super helpful, and I know the turnaround time, you said to have it by Sunday night?
To, to allow for us to process and then repackage and publish before the May, or June 6th meeting would be, that's, that's the world we live in.
Awesome. No, I appreciate it. And yeah, I think, I think Deputy Mayor Lamb, most people have said, I do like each breakout of the type of housing and kind of what that means. That's mostly the thing I focused on, because it has pictures and there's like graphics that I can understand. Councilmember Howe.
So my last question has to do with apartments. So we, we tend to focus on ownership because of the stake inequity and being able to make that transferable over time. But I want to understand the role of apartments in the housing plan, because that is a way to be affordable by a younger demographic that use it for transitional purposes. So I'm just wondering if there's a, just a bit more, more on that. I'm not looking for an answer again tonight exactly, but I, I look at a Redmond, which is 50% apartments. And it really changes the complexion of a city and a dynamic. However, it's a way to achieve a certain affordability. But I'm just kind of trying to understand the, where we're headed with this.
So that's a really great observation and point. So think about condo apartments as a, a building type mid-rise. Within mid-rise, there are many different forms. So there's, there's studio units, there's one and two-bedroom, you know, three-bedroom maybe, hopefully we'll see some three-bedroom, right? But then there's ownership as well. And the building could be owned entirely by a, a property owner that manages it and rents them as apartments, or within the building, the building could be entirely condominiums and, and owned by individuals through a homeowners association, and, or it could be a
Co-op.
Co-op building. Or some of the units could be condominium, some of the units could be apartments. And there was a trend for a while back in the, the early 2000s, around 2003, if I recall, when it really ramped up, when we saw a major uptick in conversion of apartments to condominiums. And that was a big shift with housing affordability, because many people saw that as their, their opportunity to buy, but, but at the same time, we lost rental units as part of that process. And so it's, it's difficult for us because we can't regulate the form of ownership. We can't say that they can only build apartments that are owned, that are rented, or they can only build condos that are sold. We don't have the ability or authority to do that. So that, that becomes difficult for us. You know, I, I wonder if there's a way to do that with a development agreement, if you, if you were to enter into development agreement, if you could, and this is a question for legal also, direct that the, the owner, the form of ownership be retained in rental apartment units for 99 years? You know, I, I'm just curious if we could do that for development agreement. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I would also just put a plug in for ADUs as well, because I think those provide good rental opportunities for people of all ages.
Elliot, go for it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, what I would read the diversification toolkit as in terms of the division between ownership and rental units, is that those strategies better aligned to producing multifamily units in that infographic are likely to be delivered as rental products, which to David's point, we can't regulate, we can't require it, but for various reasons in Washington State over the past decade or more, the majority of multifamily units have been delivered on a rental basis. So I think that we've got some coverage here in these strategies to provide for both home ownership opportunities and rental opportunities that may be more affordable or provide more flexibility in terms of, you know, a contract that you can manage on a month-to-month basis or year-to-year basis, as opposed to taking on a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage or something like that. So I think that speaks to another form of diversity that's also important, and I think it was a great point, Councilmember, thank you for bringing it up.
All right, Council, any further questions? Great. Thank you, Miriam, Kelly, Jackie, Elliot, and David. Really appreciate it. And yeah, I guess we look forward to seeing you in June.
Great. We'll be back on June 6th with this item. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, Council, let's take a 10-minute, nine-minute break. 8:35, we'll be back. So next up is our discussion on the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project, I think with Jed.
While our team is coming on board, I thought I'd introduce the items. So we're here tonight to talk to you about the 60% design milestone that we've reached for our Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project. Here with us is City Engineer Doug Van Gelder, Senior Project Engineer Jed Ireland, and Maria Paraki from Osborne Consulting, our design consultants for the project. And whenever Jed is ready, I will hand, hand it over to him. Thank you.
I just had to turn everything on. Hopefully it's all working now. Good evening, Mayor Clark and Council members. So this is the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line update. And I'll advance the slide. This is the route of the project from East Lake Sammamish Parkway up the hill to 210th Place Southeast. It's a crucial connection route for the plateau, and its uncontrolled stormwater runoff impacts, flooding, erosion, landslides, and it's identified as a priority project in the Zakuus Basin The goals were to collect runoff from the side streets and accommodate by doing that, but we have stub outs for future expansion into the neighborhoods. We improve the water quality, and we provide detention, and we prevent erosion from the ditches and the existing outfalls, keeping the outfalls at the existing flow rates. We're also adding non-motorized improvements, which is sidewalk and bike lane in the downhill direction, and a widened five-foot shoulder with a fog line in the uphill direction. I'll talk more about that and some of the cost implications were for widening that shoulder. Also, I wanted to point out again that this connects to the East Lake Sammamish Trail, which will be open December of this year. Here's that connection to the trail, you can see highlighted in purple will be the ramp that goes down to the trail. This isn't open yet, but it's currently under construction, and so our project will extend to that limit. I'd also point out that this final block between 205th Avenue and East Lake Sammamish Parkway wasn't in the original scope, but through discussions with council and with the public, we've extended this at council direction to completely include all of the pavement up to the intersection, and we're redoing that crosswalk and concrete and curb ramps that, for the crossing at Lewis Thompson Road, so that it'll be compliant and up to the current standard. Where we are now, we're at 60% design. We just received it, and so we're reviewing that right now and coordinating all the different disciplines. The construction costs have a high inflation forecast because there's high uncertainty. Construction is planned to begin in spring of 2024. That's our target date. Of course, a lot of it has to do with meeting, getting, acquiring the right-of-way. We're estimating a construction duration of about 15 months. The actual lane closure construction might be less than that, but the construction is expected to be about this duration. Sammamish Plateau Water is in, considering two improvements. One is mandatory, the AC water main replacement, and they're planning to relocate it to the uphill travel lane. And actually, they had the first open house or public meeting last night regarding the new sewer main that they're proposing in a downhill lane. They're, they're actually proposing that as a utility local improvement district, and I have some information on that. They have, they have a good slide presentation that I believe that they're posting on their website. Because of the improvements that we're doing, and because of Smash Plateau's work, we're looking at overlaying the entire project limits, which of course has a cost for that. Also, the existing steep grades for driveways and side streets, we do have a lot of walls, we are regrading a lot of driveways and getting contemporary construction easements in a lot of cases, but also the right-of-way, we couldn't fit the improvements, and/or the road is not in the existing right-of-way. And so we are going to be obtaining permanent easements for right-of-way use for the road. Because of the constraints, the existing driveway grid and site distances have to be maintained. We can't really fix anything because of the topography. We're also going to be maintaining the existing street lighting. Here's the road section, this is looking up the hill. You can see the, the six-foot sidewalk on the left and the bike lane and the travel lanes. And I apologize for these animations, but I just want to show approximately the sewer line will be going in on this side, on the downhill travel lane, because it's deeper, it'll have less conflicts with our new storm pipe, which will be under the gutter, and water will be on this side. Looking at the cost estimates, I apologize, this is a new slide. This is an up, update to what's in the packet. The construction estimate is a little bit higher. When we went to publish, we just, we had just started to review the 60%, and so we've, we've worked with our design consultant, and we've worked out some issues, and we have improved and refined the estimate right now. And so the construction is a little bit higher than what we had in there. So you can see the figures in there, it's about $300,000 higher overall, so we're at about 9.4 million. Now, the thing to note is that this has a pretty large bid inflation of 15%. And, and so that's just the case of the environment right now. We'll be watching that closely, and we'll be looking at potentially a mid by, adjustment if it turns out that we think that this is going to be where the bids come in. We have significant funding partners on this. We have the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, for 2.9 million, and we have two grants from King County, the flood control grant, and then the Regional Opportunities Fund. Or the, that might not be the right word for that, but anyway, there's two King County grants for stormwater, and we're also going to be applying for an additional grant for construction related to stormwater. The design will continue from 60%. Like I said, the staff and the disciplines will be looking at that, we're reviewing the 60%. We'll be making applications for environmental permits. We'll also be coordinating with the residents on specific design requirements for driveway access, and then also for permanent easements in order to build the improvements. And that's probably what's going to be driving the schedule at this point. And so we look to be doing most of that for the end of the year. The design might be done before the end of the year, but the easements and right-of-way is something that could potentially go into next year. Staff, like I mentioned, will consider, will pursue additional grant funding. And then prior to construction, we'll be having a final virtual public meeting in order to go through construction updates, how to deal with navigating the traffic and the lane closures, how to get the latest information, and to just stay connected during that period of construction. Right now, because we've set, we've had a number of public meetings, we've had open houses, the set, the alignment is set, and so we don't really need more meetings at this point. But for construction, this will give people a touch point on how to deal with the day-to-day of construction and to get updates. Let's see, that's the end of the slideshow, although I would, I will respond to something I heard that Mary Victor said. That was a, that was a request to address what we discussed at a previous council meeting about surface, of surface flows at 210th Place Southeast. That is something that we do plan to address, and so we did make note of that. And we do have information, I believe, on the other CIP project that she mentioned, which is on East Lake Sammamish Parkway. There's another instance of seepage that's nearby, that's something that could be netted to the contract, to this project. Overall, though, we want to just check in and see, just as a gut check, are we in the right direction? The improvements that we did for widening the shoulder, we only had a shoulder for about three and a half feet in some cases. Council wanted us to look at widening to five feet on the uphill lane. That actually meant that we had about $400,000 of improvements in order to do that, unfortunately, because of guard rail and retaining walls. The road as it is now is built right on the top of the edge slope, there was no way to widen it, there's no existing shoulder. So it is expensive, but we believe that this is in keeping with the policy and decisions set by council for safety and to complete the corridor to its maximum extent. In addition, because of the improvements of the district and for doing the shoulder widening, it makes sense to widen the shoulder. So the widening for this half of the street is an additional $150,000 roughly for a two-inch And with that, that completes the slide presentation, and we can open for questions.
Councilmember Tring?
Yeah, one quick question. Electrical, do we need to move any posts, poles?
Yes, we'll be working with PSC on that. Some of the poles are in conflict with our sidewalk, and so they'll have to be relocated. For the most part, that'll be done under their franchise, they'll pay for that. And in addition, we do have some low-hanging telecom, telecommunications wires in areas over vaults or other areas where we're going to have cranes, and so they'll have to be temporarily relocated or dropped on the ground in order to get, make clearance. And so there will be some adjustment to that.
Okay, so I have a request, and so I need to talk to the city manager, I think, on this one, is people have said for 12 years of my life, the last 12 years, that undergrounding utilities is super expensive. And I don't disagree with them. I, I think they're right. But on this project, what, is it possible to give me an actual real number that says, okay, here's this project we're doing, the number's 10 grand, 10 million, nine whatever, just call it 10 million for an easy number? What's the, what would be the increase on this project if we were to underground the utilities going up the hill? Could I get that number? Is that a mean request?
We can pursue getting that. Oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead, Jed.
Yeah, we, we could get that number, I don't have that available now. It's not something that we have done, but that's, we could work with PSC on an estimate for that. That's something the city would pay for going forward, if that was the direction.
I just, I just think in, in a city like Sammamish, undergrounding our utilities is the way to go. I understand it's super expensive, and, you know, I'm not going to tax the rich to, to do that, but it's, it's definitely an interest of mine is to underground the utilities. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I'm super excited about this project, especially with the access to the, the trail at the bottom going in. I think that's going to be great. When, I know you said you just got the, the documents, and when will the, the 60% design documents be available? Is that something we can post on the project site for folks?
Yeah, we can look at images and post them. We haven't done a role plot or prepared for that, but that's something that we can look at doing to show where the extents of the walls are. We weren't planning to show anything extensive, because we'll be meeting with the owners individually who are affected by each of the facilities, but if that's a desire, we can look at getting that accomplished to prepare exhibits.
Yeah, I think just getting whatever we have out there, not necessarily asking you to do more, but I think that'll be helpful. And so if I understood correctly, on the uphill side, And so, if I understood correctly, on the uphill side, we're going to have five feet? Is that going to be pretty consistent from top to bottom then?
That'll be the minimum. That'll be consistent, yeah.
That is really great. Again, I think this will become a much bigger access point for people who are looking for alternative mobility there. And then, I'm glad to hear you guys are going to look for additional grants. You know, I think we check a lot of boxes with this, right? We've got stormwater management, we've got the mobility and connectivity. So, I think there are a number of opportunities there. So, I look forward to hopefully trying to find some more money to help, help fund this project. So, yeah, that's all I had. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. It was just really a comment. I was glad to hear, Jed, you mentioned Mary's public comment today about the different aspects of this project, that she was hoping to see that extension up to 210th and then at the curb down at the East Lake Samamish Parkway. So, thank you for kind of keeping that foremost in your mind. I'd like to see if we can work that into that project and help this roadway. And then, I have to agree with Councilmember Trina about the underground utilities. It'd be interesting to hear what that, what that would cost. Because every year, we lose power somewhere along the way. And I know we probably can't do the entire city this way, but it would be just interesting to know even like a reasonable ballpark figure of what that would be. It's not to say that we will do it, but it would, it would be nice to know what that project might entail. And so, then at least going forward, we can speak to it. So, but yeah, but thank you for taking Mary's comments on board here. And I'd like to see, you know, how you guys integrate that into the plan. That'd be great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just had a quick question. Do you foresee the road actually being closed or just lane closures?
We're anticipating only lane closures. Their vaults are large, and so, those are the, those are the tricky element of that. But that's what we're looking for. It's just a lane closure, and that was the intent of the design.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
My question has to do with, is there, getting that, those easements? I know that you are on a timeline to try to fast-track them as quickly as you can, I'm quite sure. Is that, is there any way that that could actually hold you up so that we end up into that penalty phase and having to spend that million-dollar slush fund in some way? Or is there an eminent domain type of argument that can be made to push through what we need to have happen?
Well, I would say we have met with the owners, a number of them, that had the major impacts to their driveways. And they're very receptive to the project, they understood. And so, I don't foresee any particular issues at this point of us going forward. And I don't think that we would need any particularly, any measures like that. I think that we're going to be able to work through this. And I expect that we'll be able to get the right of way in about six months from now is our goal.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you, Jed. When did you say, so this is the 60%, and then when are you coming back? Is there like a 90 or 100%? What's the next steps? Maybe I missed it.
You know, so I think we haven't set a time of when we would come back. We would probably do another check-in when we have a significant new revision of the cost estimate as we get nearer to construction. So, that would be either maybe at the 90% level would be a good check-in to look at those costs. And the next would be for, you know, for bid approval. We'd also have another public meeting for the residents at construction, before construction starts, just to get them integrated so they have all the information. So, we will be coming back to council, just because the bids are so volatile and the escalation factors that we have are, there's, there's low confidence in them in a sense. We have 15% markup in our estimates now. We're probably going to have to check in and keep refining those figures. And then, in addition, if council is interested in us potentially looking at this other Zacuse Basin Plan CP4 or 5, I think it's CP4, that was a seepage issue on East Lake Samamish Parkway, we'd have to look at that. I think it was estimated at 123,000 in the Zacuse Basin Plan. We could look at adding that, and then we would, we would have those figures, anything that we had to add, including if 210th, if it needed to be integrated into this storm to an improvement. It might be something that we can do with maintenance as well to make sure that the ditch is improved. And that was our, that's going to be our first attempt to correct that issue of the surface flow at 210th. So, those two issues are potentially new costs.
Perfect. Now, that's super helpful. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. I don't know if all of you are staying on for the next one? Maybe except Maria.
Three out of the four.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Okay, next up is sidewalk program prioritization.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are excited to bring this item to you tonight. This is just a discussion. We haven't brought up our sidewalk program in a few years to council, so looking forward to it. This is a precursor to our more detailed meeting next week, when we will be bringing a few options for council to consider for our tip, for our 2024-2029 tip. Currently, the sidewalk program is budgeted at 100,000 per year. And this is, our team here tonight will be presenting a few options for your consideration. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Doug Van Gelder and Jed. Again, thank you.
And I have never, first off, thank you, Audrey, and thank you, Mayor and council for having us. I've never shared a PowerPoint through this. I put it in the P drive. I don't know if I run it from my computer or how that works.
Yeah, you should be able to bring it up, and there's a share, share button at the bottom. It's in a different spot than teams.
Okay, I see.
Of course, they're all different.
All right. And hopefully, I... Am I sharing now or I don't know?
Not yet. If you select that green button, you should have a few opportunities to, it should preview your screen, and then there should be one more button to push. And something's coming up. Perfect.
I don't know if, is it the sidewalk program?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. All right, there we go. So, little bit of the history on this, the two programs. So, the Samamish non-motorized program completes the gaps in pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the city. This included bike lane and also walking trails. These were for non-motorized projects. And in the packet, we had showed how they were, they're ranked and scored, the criteria. So, one of the questions we were asking is that we were going to ask was whether the criteria that we provided still works for the council and the city. The closer you were, to kind of summarize, the closer you were to schools, you got more points. The heavier traffic in larger streets, more points for that. Unfortunately, as you get to the local streets, not so many points. In the past, these, our budget was about $750,000 a year. Now, we have two programs. It's sidewalk gap and then I'm motorized. And for each millennial, it's 200K each. So, it works out to be 100K per year for the, for the gap, sidewalk gap, and 100K per year for the non-motorized.
Doug, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
We're still on the, on the original beginning of the slideshow, so if you're moving along, we're not seeing it.
Okay, I'm not sure how that works then.
In the, the left corner of your screen, you can go to, from beginning, there's the green arrow, and it should be able to allow you to share or allow you to advance.
All right, let's... It says I'm sharing a screen. Is that different or is it still the same?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, and I'm just going to play dumb here. And if I hit it, is it, is it changing at all? Probably not. Okay. I will work, I'll continue working with it. So, background is, back in 2012, they originally had a bunch of projects, and then we updated them again in 2018. Six-year transportation improvement program included a bunch of, had a bunch of items. We also had items for the trails, bikeways and pass. This is not letting me share. I truly apologize, and I'm more than a little frustrated.
Doug, if it's helpful, I can share since you and Jed have more of the detailed information. I'll bring up the presentation in just one second.
And I put it in the P, P drive like I, like was requested. And we can go to slide four, the next one. So, through the rankings on 2018, the top four projects were the gap projects and I'm motorized on Southeast 224th Street, 212th Avenue Southeast, Northeast Eagle Hill Road, and Southeast 48th Street. Great projects, the E-Bike Creek, the one by E-Bike Creek, I want to say is approximately 2,000 linear feet. It'd be a nice project to close the gaps. However, when these projects were prioritized, again, the budget was considerably higher per year. The Southeast 24th project is roughly $2 million. And so, if we were going to continue at the current funding level, that would take at least 10 years to save money in order, in order to move forward. 212th, 870,000, Eagle Hill Road, 742,000, Southeast 48th Street, 1,676,000. So, on our list of projects that we have, there's probably close to about 30 sidewalk gaps currently, and it's constantly growing. We get requests from citizens, new development comes in, and so, we're constantly updating our list. What we have found, however, is that there's a, around $300,000, there's a giant jump from these smaller projects to the larger projects. And so, what we are asking or recommending is, since we do have a much smaller budget now, that we combine the two projects or the two, two programs so that we have roughly about 200K a year, which is still significantly less than the 750. But there's about, currently on our list, about 13 projects that are all well under $300,000. So, we'd like to start, change the program instead of doing the large projects, to focus more on the smaller ones. Because if we keep, stay with the highest priority all the time, we're never going to get anything built. These larger programs are projects, we can now move eventually into the tip, and each time we update the tip, we can rank those projects and possibly move forward with those. The other, another option that we also have is, since some of these projects, which are more expensive, we can always prioritize a few of those so we actually get the design done. That would still be under the 200 or around $200,000 or less for some of these. And then, we can go for grants to help pay for some of these larger, larger projects. Have something shelf-ready, we go, go for a grant, hopefully get it, and it helps fund, fund some of these projects. And next slide, please. So, possibility for several, is safe route, school routes, get some of these projects ready for the TIB and federal grants as well. And last slide, I believe. So, as I mentioned earlier, staff will continue accepting sidewalk requests from residents. We will continue to score projects and evaluate them and hopefully have a competitive projects that we can select for engineering design and grant submittals. And once again, I apologize for not being fluid in teams and files, but I bumbled my way through it. I apologize.
Thank you, Doug. So, again, this presentation was just really a preview to next week's presentation, where we'll be presenting larger options for our 24-29 tip. Historically, we have funded, the last few years, anyway, the sidewalk program has had a lower funding amount. We would like to combine the non-motorized program and sidewalk program, use the evaluation criteria presented in the packet. And that allows these projects, these smaller projects to stay within the program, allows us to bundle these projects together within the program to create a little bit more efficiency for both design and construction. Most of the smaller projects hover around that $250,000 level. And I think we'd probably cap the programs in that, I'm sorry, the projects in that program are around $350,000 to allow us to go out for contracting within the small works roster. So, we'll have a little bit more details for council next week. And we are also working on a GIS app that'll have an integrated way to see all of our planned projects as well. So, with that, we just wanted to see if there are any questions from council on our recommendation to combine these programs ahead of next week.
Awesome. I just want to know about the beaten hill road. Two come up, I guess. Use that like every day. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, hey, Doug, don't worry about your, your, your team skills there or your Zoom skills. As long as you are fluent in sidewalks, then we're all good, right? So, one question I have on the scoring is I noticed that the scoring, if it's within a quarter of a mile of transit or a park and ride facility, it's not rated as highly as like just a commercial area. So, I was wondering if that may be something we might want to look at, especially as we move forward on, you know, vehicle miles traveled and other sustainability items. And then, the other question I have is, are there less expensive alternatives to traditional sidewalks in some of these areas that we can consider? Because I know like right now, what is it, isn't it like a million dollars a mile or something roughly for sidewalks, which is just kind of crazy, right?
To answer your two questions, yes, we can look at if, I mean, it's, we'll go with what your recommendations are. If you, if the council would like us to increase the numbers for the transit stops, we can definitely look at that and show the different characteristics or the different values based on those. As far as different alternatives to the sidewalks, right now, I have been working, when, when the opportunity arises, on updating our design standards. We, if we want to go with, I mean, I've seen it in some of the older portions of the city where the sidewalk really is just asphalt and then it's concrete with no curb and gutter. It's an option. I don't know if it'd be very popular. There's also just having a extruded or a type of curb that separates the two. That's not normally very positive either, because then that's also a maintenance, maintenance headache because the curbs just pop off. But there's, there's always options. It's just whether that's what, you could also go with full asphalt and just, then just put a yellow stripe. Problem is, it doesn't really provide what people feel is safety with having that curb. A car is going to roll over regardless, but as a pedestrian walking on a paved shoulder with just a yellow stripe versus a sidewalk, there is that false sense of security and comfort level that a lot of people have. But again, that's also another option.
Not walking on the sidewalks anymore, no. Thanks, Doug. I was also wondering, just from a materials perspective as well, like I don't really know what goes into the most significant costing. If it's just the, the right of way, might be what makes it expensive. But I was thinking, you know, concrete's expensive these days and also not very environmentally friendly, so.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. If I could, team, I think one, I wanted to get back to your prior comment, and I'm going to look to our experts to correct me if I go astray here, but I think there's a vast difference between doing curb gutter sidewalk, which includes stormwater as a component of it, that, that is what makes that sidewalk number really expensive. And if you don't do that, then you're essentially... And if you don't do that, then you're essentially not addressing those issues as well. So there's a lot of policy components built into that, whether or not we are doing true curb gutter sidewalk or something different. There's a lot of pieces within that to consider. So I think for the team to look at it, I think it's worth doing because obviously cost is going to be an issue, and sidewalks tend to be, as we start to weigh out priorities, it tends to drop down the list for obvious reasons, because bigger projects are, have higher safety ratings. And so that's why I think the recommendation is to pull these out a little bit, the smaller ones in particular, to say what can we get done year over year?
Yeah, I, I love that, and, and I'm glad to see us prioritizing the schools. Obviously, that's a huge issue, so appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, council, any other questions? Oh, I thought that was left from last time. I'm sorry. Yeah, Debbie Mary Lamb.
So my question is, when the tip comes back, can we relook at the road projects and possibly move some funding from a road project into sidewalks? I just think that sidewalks are so important, especially when we're talking about connectivity and getting people out of cars and kids walking to school. So I'd really like to see more funding this year in sidewalks. And is there an opportunity to, like I just said, take a road project off and shift the dollars?
Absolutely. That, that is council's opportunity as we, as we bring the tip back. So we'll, we'll bring it back in kind of a very informal discussion format, preview, if you will, for council next week. We will have two options for council's consideration. So one has our programs at the top, and then it's just every project is prioritized based on its score. Another option for council's consideration would be still the programs at the top, and instead of all the projects, big road projects competing against each other, we have divided them up based on their project type, and so what their outcome of the project is. They're still scored within each category, but we've provided a handful of categories to, to put them in. So that may be one, one way we could consider, and we will be looking for direction next week on either one of those options. We could refine those and bring the final option back. I think we have two meetings in June to go over the tip, and we can adjust numbers accordingly.
So are the 218 projects, are they being shown because they weren't, they're, they're just sitting there and, and no direction, like it's just not moving?
The sidewalks on 218?
Yeah, just not, well, the 2018 projects is, is what was shown on the slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, yes, they was, they haven't moved forward because mainly there isn't, there hasn't been funding for them, and they were not on, from my understanding, they weren't high on the priority list for, and then also we lost the TI, wasn't, didn't we lose the TI or the tip at one point, and so it's now coming back. So we can put some of these on a priority, but it's how do you fund it? And I think Jed might have a better history on it than I do.
Oh, Jed, I believe you're muted.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, in 2018, we were kicking off the Transportation Master Plan, which was going to be kind of this large effort that include non-motorized projects, including what was the 2004 Trails, Bikeways, and Pass Plan. That really was the plan that kicked off a lot of the capital improvement, particularly non-motorized improvements and gaps in the city. And in 2018, the TMP, the Transportation Master Plan, was going to be the, the next big effort to reexamine that plan and come up with a referred, a new plan. These projects were shown as we, we thought that these were in the Trails and Backways and Pass Plan, they would still be high priority projects in the new TMP. But at that time, council decided they wanted to wait until the TMP was completed. Now, of course, the legwork was done, and it's drafted, but it was never adopted. And so these projects just kind of were put on hold until that plan was adopted. And so we're just bringing it up as context. That old program had $750,000 per year, and so we budgeted less. And, you know, our budget is a much lower number, and so we can't do some of those large preferred projects that were highlighted in the old Trails, Bikeways, and Pass Plan and what is now listed in the draft Transportation Master Plan. I hope that answers that.
Yeah, thanks for that.
If I can just add on a little bit, if I may, I think a really great opportunity to take a look holistically at our, our transportation network would obviously be for our transportation element that we're working on. So this, this year will be essentially a bridge year in some ways for our transportation improvement plan as we're given, re-taking another, a deep dive into our 20-year project list. So that list will, will change based on inputs from our land use changes, from inputs from the transit plan that we're working on. So all these things, I know DCD David Pyle was mentioning earlier, they're all, they're all working together, and we'll, we'll have a lot of opportunity to take another look at that, you know, 20-year list as well. So our Long Range System Completion Plan will help, help us inform the, the six, six-year moving window for transportation planning efforts in the future as well.
That's great. I look forward to seeing the list when it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, I don't see any other questions. Yeah, this looks great, and thank you. We're excited to see you two times in June.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Anything else? Awesome. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, next we have council reports. I think councilmember O'Farrell, I know you have one.
Yes, I would just like, if council could excuse me from the meeting next Tuesday, which will be the 16th, I will be out of town, so if council could excuse me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you need a motion for that now?
I don't know. Do we now or then? I have no idea.
I think you can do it now, and it'll be on the record for this meeting.
I move that we excuse councilmember O'Farrell from the May 16th meeting.
All right. Moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Awesome. Anyone else have?
You have to bring us souvenirs now.
Yeah, bring us something good. Anyone else have any reports? Oh, Debbie Mary Lamb?
So I'll be attending the Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow evening, and there will be three topics, three main topics of discussion. First is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority five-year plan. They've made some updates, and so they'll be bringing that back. We'll be discussing the King County Hazardous Waste Management Program Annual Report. And then we'll also be discussing the Blake decision. Just for context, in 2021, the Washington State Supreme Court struck down Washington's criminal statute prohibiting possession of a controlled substance in the state versus Blake decision. And during the last legislative session, the House and Senate could not agree on classifying possession as a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, jail time, fine, and treatment standards. And so the governor has taken this issue up during a special session on May 16th to adopt a law before the current law expires on July 1st. So in the meantime, local jurisdictions, including our city, are preparing our own ordinances in the event the new policy is not adopted. We currently have a placeholder on June, on the June 20th agenda to take action if necessary ahead of the July 1st deadline. And I don't know if the city manager has, has any more information on that?
That was well said. We are, we are working collectively across the county with our prosecutors, the city contracts for prosecution. Our contracted prosecutor is very experienced and is working with other prosecutors around the county to come up with a model ordinance. We've seen some other jurisdictions like Kent already move forward, and so we will have a model ordinance that has been worked with the courts, the public defenders and the prosecutors at that time in case the state is not able to act in a timely manner. We will be prepared to move forward with something that will hopefully allow our police and our neighbors' police officers to know that it is hopefully as consistent as possible. Otherwise, it will be very, very hard to try to manage across borders.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart? Yeah, I wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow, the farmer's market opens, and I don't want to jinx it, but I think the weather's going to cooperate, so it's going to be a nice sunny day, and I hope to see everybody out between four and eight tomorrow at the farmer's market. And just on the Blake decision, I, I did not know this until this past weekend, but the law that was struck down had the drug possession as a felony. A felony has a maximum sentence of up to six months in prison. With a gross misdemeanor, that increases the potential jail time up to a year. So it would actually be more punitive than what was in place before. And in January of this year, and I think I shared this with everyone on council, the state legislature in 2021 put together, or funded a study that pulled together law enforcement agencies, mental health providers, and people with lived experience to come together on recommendations on how to handle this. And the recommendation was a misdemeanor, not a gross misdemeanor, which has a much lower penalty and often has more positive impacts, because if you put someone in jail for even for 30 days, they tend to lose their job and their housing. So when they get out, the odds of them being able to do better are not so good. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thanks.
All right, Scott, did you have anything else?
Councilmember Stewart stole my thunder.
Sounds right.
No, it's totally fine. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. I did want to remind that the farmer's market kicks off this week, and the city is proud to be a cosponsor this year of the market, so we're really excited to have them kicking off again on the City Hall Plaza. And I want to put a plug in ahead of time again. It just came out in the newsletter as well, but we will be hosting our Pride Event as part of the farmer's market on Wednesday, May 31st. We're planning on holding the event itself at 5:30, but we'll be there for the duration of the market for those that want to come by. We'll have booths up, and hopefully it will be a, a great event, and that the weather will hold up. So that's the most important part. So I want to invite everybody out for that. So thank you, Mayor.
Great. All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Trine? Make that motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Good night, everybody.